I'll call to order the October 20th, 2014, regular city council meeting and ask those in the audience who would like to join myself and the council in the pledge of allegiance to please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Our next item of business is audience comments. I would like to outline sort of the rules for participation. Citizen comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions that we make. Testing, one, two, three, four? Okay, can everyone hear me? All right. See what happens if your mic's not on, the little red light, the on the air light above you, blinks to remind you to turn it on. And sometimes it blinks even when your microphone is on, I guess. So back to audience comments. Anyone from the public who wishes to comment will have the opportunity to do so. When recognized, please come to the lectern, speak into the microphone, state your name, address, and your relationship to the city. Comments are limited to five minutes. If you have written comments, please submit those to the clerk. Again, citizens' comments, written and verbal, are an important aspect of doing business with the council, and we take them seriously and into consideration. And with that, I would ask the clerk if anyone has signed up to speak this evening.
Yes, first on the list is Jim Benny. Oh Barry? My apologies.
Hi, I'm Jim Barry. I live at 1810 203rd Avenue Southeast in Sammamish. I am treasurer of the Friends of Lake Sammamish State Park. The committee that was considering grant requests chose, for reasons we understand, not to consider the Friends of Lake Sammamish State Park, and I would like to ask the council as a whole to please take that under advisement and look at what we're asking for. I think it's reasonable and whatever. We don't fit into the mold of most of the organizations. We're a brand-new organization. We think the state park is a great asset to the city, like the Hatchery is and other things, and we hope to emulate some of what we're doing. I understand the guidelines, but the reason we weren't is this would be more, supposedly more than 50% of our operating budget, because basically we don't have an operating budget for this year. We're formulating one. We are over a year old now. We've raised over $20,000. We've paid for the design of a new children's play area in the park. We think we can return the park to what it was 50 years ago when I started going there as a child. It has gone along deteriorated significantly. As you may be aware, the state has reduced by about 80% the amount of money they have for state parks. We would like to think that we would get as much consideration as Fish did when they first came into existence. The city gave Fish significantly more money than we're asking for. A lot of that was in capital, and I understand that, but we just think it's a great asset to this community. I know you're considering annexing it into the city limits, and we hope you'll reconsider or consider our request. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nora Kars. My address is 3500 East Lake Sammamish Boulevard, Sammamish. But I am a very active member of Issaquah. Hardly ever go to Sammamish. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to speak about Friends of Lake Sammamish State Park. I am also a member of the board. For the last two years, we have been working to organize our group to engage people in the events and activities within the park. You know of the success of the soccer teams that allow community children to play on the park fields, and of the numerous large-area events such as triathlon and the bike races. But then there are the bathers, the picnickers, the walkers, the runners, and bike riders. When the weather permits, and it's been a pretty good year, hasn't it? Employees from nearby businesses and senior citizens walk in the park because of the feeling of safety, a flat surface, the serenity, and the convenience of a beautiful park. This wonderful park could use some help to help the friends through the next couple of years. Think of what we could do. Perhaps a partnership with a health group to offer exercise programs for all ages. Mark the trails. There are trails across from Costco and that shopping center that people do not realize are there because they are not marked. Establish an interpretive walk for education and delight. History and natural walks were given this year. We would like to expand that activity to include schoolchildren. Bring out environmental groups together to discuss our common concerns. It's an exciting start to think of all the possibilities that beautiful park can offer to all of us. We have organized work parties to renovate the picnic tables that have suffered over the years. On Wednesday, Hilton Garden Inn, as a part of the corporate give-back-to-the-community, has volunteers coming to help us clean a portion of the landscape of invasive plants. We thank them for that. Last year, we had our first holiday boat parade with close to 100 people, which shocked us. Put the date, Saturday, December 6th, on your calendar. Bring the family, the kids in particular, enjoy this early-evening activity. We want to reach out to the community to enlist their help on projects, events, activities, and to become members of the Friends. We have lots of visions for the park, but with a small group of members, we need a staff person to help implement our ideas. I'm here tonight with the hope you will consider funding a part-time position. Thank you for your time.
Mr. Mayor, Council, Martin Buckley, live at 400 Southeast Darce Street. I'm a resident and a business owner in Issaquah. I'm here probably with quite a few people talking about traffic throughout the Old Town area. I've lived in the city for over six years, and I've noticed that the traffic has deteriorated dramatically over that period. And I think most of that traffic has actually caused, you know, two reasons. Mainly from high school traffic. We see the peaks of the traffic during that morning rush to get to the high school and when high school lets out. Where I am up on Darce Street, right next to the high school, we see people actually, you know, cutting through, taking corners quite quickly, and causing severe backups of traffic. We do work closely with IPD to actually look at how we can actually, you know, mitigate some of these illegal right turns, but I think a lot of these issues are causing safety problems for the residents and our kids, but also deteriorating the quality of life downtown as well. I would ask the council to look at a couple of things, and I'm sure there are going to be many more ideas this evening. First of all, can we actually do a survey or look at where this traffic's actually coming from, you know, in the downtown area, specifically the Old Town area? You know, as I said, I believe a lot of this traffic is coming from the high school. And if that is proven, can we actually start working with the Issaquah School District to actually start looking at maybe an education program for the kids who are driving to and from school, up from the Highlands, up from Sammamish area, and actually educate them as to the dangers of speeding, the dangers of taking cut-throughs and actually turning right when they shouldn't be? Secondly, more close liaison with the Issaquah Police Department to actually enforce those no-right turns and actually keep the through-flow of traffic going through on the arterial such as Sunset and Second on the way through town. Apart from that, I'm sure lots of people are going to say similar things, but, you know, this is a quality-of-life issue as well as a safety issue. I'd appreciate your time on this. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Cyrus Crone, resident of 300 Southeast Bush Street, aka Talladega Freeway. What inspired me to come this evening and invite some of my neighbors and friends was that I was really struggling a couple of weeks ago with the issues in the area, particularly Bush Street, and my mind started to wander towards vigilante justice, and I figured that was the time to come to city council because, I mean, thoughts were ranging from, you know, what do we do? Can we put, you know, our own humps? Do I need to stay out in a lawn chair until 10 o'clock at night and, you know, start to log license plate numbers? And when it got to that point, I'd rather be talking to you than talking to the folks across the street. So that was really the rationale for coming. Martin was far more articulate than I will probably be, but I think the crux of the problem, and I know a couple of years ago, this was an issue, and the city council put those local-access-only signs around the community. That helped considerably. I think probably 80%, that's a, I'm just, you know, guessing at that number, but it seems just anecdotally that, you know, 80% or so of just the through-way traffic has ceased. We have a small group of offenders, but it's consistent. I did submit a letter, and I don't know the particular individual, but that white BMW has probably caught the ire of my grievances. So recognizing that everyone's asking for money and we're under pressures, and the bypass is, you know, probably not in the cards, I like to refer to it as the Tiger Mountain Throughway, it's a little bit more of an attractive name, is, I was trying to think through some options that would be cost-efficient, probably have as most impact as possible, and not put a burden on our budget. I shared those in the letter, but speed humps, and there are a couple of four-way intersections on Bush that might work. What's been interesting is I've gotten to know my neighbors better through these conversations is that I'm learning the history of this issue and the do's and don'ts, and it's funny because, you know, you move traffic one direction, the neighbors on that street don't want to move in that way, and so it seems like there's a bottleneck of ideas, and I don't know what the remedy is. I just wanted to come and bring it to your attention that it really does start at the beginning of the school year. And, you know, our officers have got so much responsibility, they can only be so many places at one time. 24/7 is probably not feasible. I think at the beginning of the school year, they do a good job, and then the kids probably figure out, you know, the game, and then that only lasts for so long. So anyway, I think, you know, we all have young children and pets, and particularly on Bush Street, there are a couple of disabled family homes and group homes, and when you watch particularly those individuals try to cross that street, you know, I'm just going to teach my kids to do the right thing as citizens and try to help, you know, the disabled and old across the road, but I worry about that because the darn vehicles are coming through so fast. It's just a concern that we worry about. So anyway, thank you very much. I don't know if I need to resubmit the letter, but I think the last thing I'll say, just in compliments to the city, because this is something that I do in my day job, is look at how governments are evolving in citizen government initiatives and e-government, and kudos to the city of Issaquah for your communications department and how quickly and effectively they respond to citizens' comments online. I really appreciate it, and well done in terms of evolving with technology. So thank you very much.
All right, next on the list, Matt Griffin.
See if I can get this technology figured out here. My name is Matt Griffin. I live at 280 Northeast Birch Street. Local resident, and I'm also a business owner, but today I'm here to talk to you as a dad. I spend every day walking my kids to school from the corner of Third and Birch to Clark Elementary School, and the number of times I've had to yank my kids out of intersections this year has been somewhat dangerous. It's concerning. So I just wanted to just do a brief overhead slide. I'm not a traffic planner. I can't tell you what to do, but I can tell you the facts of the situation. So I know that we all know that every morning, sunset between, you know, 6:45 and 9:15 gets packed, and also down at the four-way intersection by the fire station, and then turning up toward the high school. Variety of reasons, but we also have, you know, the high school, the elementary school, Clark Elementary down south, and we also have Memorial Park Preschool right here, adjacent to the ballfield, if you guys didn't know. So at about 9:15 every day, the preschool is loading in, and all of the parents are walking their kids to elementary school, and at the same time, everybody's coming in late from work, or late for work, you know, checking their cellphones, you know, drinking a cup of coffee, still getting caffeinated in the morning, and they're getting fed up with the traffic on Sunset. So they're bailing off into the adjacent neighborhoods, down Sixth, Fifth, Fourth, and Third, going both directions, and when they do, they take lefts, mainly on Andrews Street and Bush Street, and then Alder, and then the alley between Alder and Sunset. The widest streets are Alder, Sunset, and Bush, and I think because the streets are wide, people tend to pick up a little bit of speed and momentum. There's a lot of cars parked on both sides of the intersection, and you have kids crossing. And as you know, if you're coming up to an intersection and there's a car there, little kids are small, and they're hard to see. You know, they're not paying attention, parents are doing the best they can, and then, you know, an accident's going to happen. So here are the points that I've identified. We've got Second and Alder right there, right in front of the preschool, and I see parents unloading their kids going to preschool every morning, and cars screeching to a halt at that stop sign. On the corner of Andrews, and the most dangerous one that I've seen is the alley between Andrews and Bush, and I think a lot of residents here live on Bush. My concern is that it's just a matter of time before a small accident happens, and that's a bad thing. I think that the city has got enough assets and resources to develop a phased plan, not to spend a lot of money on it, but to take a look at what the issues are, how we can address that in series before spending lots of money on a concern that we really don't understand. I appreciate the city just taking a look at this. It is a legitimate concern for a lot of neighbors downtown, and we just want to look out for the safety of our children.
Good evening, Mayor Butler, Council President Winterstein, and esteemed members of the council. My name is Justin Walsh, and I live at 230 Southeast Bush Street, right at the intersection of Southeast Bush and Second Avenue Northeast. I'm here today as a resident and a business owner. I'm here to express my concerns about two issues. The first is the traffic that we've heard about along Southeast Bush Street between Second and Sixth, and then the intersection of Second and Bush generally. Now, I've been a resident here for just over two and a half years, and in that time, I've been fortunate enough to get to know the city, worked as a volunteer with EFR, and when that ended due to a medical condition, to work as a commissioner on the Planning Policy Commission, so I'm very familiar with these issues. I'd first like to address the traffic along Bush Street. Now, no one can dispute that the city needs open venues for travel, especially in lieu of our traffic problems generally and our grade in that area. People are using our city as a thoroughfare to destinations outside the city from outside the city. There's not a lot we can do with that without county resources. However, those people rarely travel along Bush between Second and Sixth outside of those business hours. You know, we're not seeing the clogged areas that we're seeing along Sunset and along Bush. What we're seeing is a select people violating the law and rushing down that street. Regardless of the left-hand turn signs, you're seeing a slew of young adults ignoring that signage, and often approaching speeds up to 40 miles an hour in a 25 mile-per-hour zone with children frequently in that area. Now, this street has many families with small children, and it's only a matter of time before something happens. It's my understanding that speed bumps or closures have been contraindicated by EFR as something that would impact response times. I would say the impact on those times, given the frequency of calls in that area, would be minimal, given the proximity to Station 71, and the impact of an accident or a small child getting killed would be great. So weighing those, I think it weighs in favor of finding a solution beyond just the traffic The city needs to look to a solution to this speeding problem, be it radar-enabled signs, speed bumps, or even possibly one-end closures along Second between Sunset and Crossden. Any of these solutions is better than nothing at all. Now, regarding the intersection of Second and Bush itself, there's an additional concern that I have that I wish to bring to council. I hear, working from home, approximately 10 times per day during heavy traffic periods, honking of horns at the intersection. This, I've witnessed one accident there personally just after I moved in. Now, the confusion at this intersection appears to arise between people along Second believing they have a stop sign when they don't due to a lack of familiarity with the area. It also arises due to people going along Bush mistakenly believing that those people along Second have a stop sign when they don't, and pulling out into the intersection. The city needs to look at a solution for this problem as well to alleviate that traffic concern and the safety concerns, as it's only going to rack up the number of accidents and, you know, with the number of pedestrians through that area, potential pedestrian accidents as well. I don't have children yet, but when I do, I'm going to have the same concerns as my neighbors, and I wish for a solution to be found. Thank you.
Next, we have the Humphreys. I'm not sure if there's one speaker or two.
Thank you. Brian Humphreys, Sixth Avenue, and Issaquah here resident. And the concerns that we've all had and heard now that, we live on Sixth Avenue, and so we have the daycare on their side, and so we see those kids who, all the parents park on our side of the street, and then they cross over. So everyone that's turning that left illegally down Sixth Avenue to turn down Bush or Andrew to get down to Second, we're on Sixth Avenue, and we witness the same thing, the same concerns that you've already heard, and that's really why we're here, to say, this isn't just an Andrews-Bush thing, but it's also a Sixth Avenue thing as well, that this is still a huge concern for us as well. Thank you.
Is there another one in that group who wanted to speak? Okay, thank you. Malia Greening.
I live at 575 Southeast Bush Street, and I didn't come as prepared as some of my neighbors. It was very impressive to see that PowerPoint presentation. Mr. Humphrey, though, now that I know your name, did bring up a good point. My children go to Giggly Wiggly on that corner you're talking about, and even though that sign is there that says you can't turn left off of Sunset onto Sixth, people are still using the trailhead to cross, and what they do is they just sneak back there, go at super-high speeds, and then fly through the Giggly Wiggly parking lot to make their left onto Sixth, which is also illegal, and then cut through Bush where they continue to speed at over 40 miles an hour. And the reason I know it's that fast is because my car alarm goes off almost every day because some of the kids or whoever, when they're getting to work or school in the morning, are going so fast that it vibrates the road loud enough that there's a whole bunch of them flying down, and it sets my alarm off. And I heard actually through the Facebook site that people heard someone's alarm going off. Well, that's me, hello. So, and I have a cheap little stock alarm on my Honda Element, so it's not like it's sensitive. Also, I am a little worried about the speeds on Bush Street because I do put my little yellow man with the flag up that says my kids are playing, and people will look me in the eye as they speed by and see my flag and just continue to speed. So my concern is if we just put up digital signs that say your speed, they're going to look at the speed sign that says 45 miles an hour with the same way they look at me in the eye and ignore it when they speed on by. The sign has made an impact, though, that no-left-turn sign, for having people not allowed to turn between 6:00 and 8:00 a.m., and 2:00 and 5:00. And so cops sometimes, police sometimes sit out there at those hours, which is great, but it's usually a couple of times a month that I see the policeman sitting out there, and people know, oh, I won't turn that day, I won't speed that day. But it's not just those hours that are impacted, it's all day. I mean, people are speeding through there at noon and at night, and my kids are still playing out on the street, as are all my neighbors' children. Let me think, is there anything else I want to say? Oh, one of you brought up the fact that children are walking with their parents to school in the morning to the elementary schools, and a lot of times, they're just kids walking alone. I saw a little girl today, actually, on my way home, who ran across the pedestrian walkway on Second onto Bush to her street, and then she was, I mean, she was kind of paying attention, but not really, and so the other thing is, there's kids that are not fully paying attention to traffic, and when people are going 45 miles an hour, they can't stop in time. So I also am with my neighbors in that I would like something to be done. I don't have a solution, but something is better than nothing before something tragic happens. Thank you.
Tony Wren.
Well, subject change. I'm here to talk about the proposed increase in business and occupational tax. I'm partners, I live in Sammamish at 26990 Southeast 22nd Way in Sammamish. I work and own part of Evergreen Ford and Evergreen Lincoln, and partners with Dan Rowe. Our families have all gone to school at local schools. My boys have all come through Skyline. We're locals, we've been here since '99. I built the Chevy store across the street from the Ford store. We're here to stay. The reason I was moved to come to this meeting tonight and address you folks is the BNO tax proposal that's been included in the '15 budget weighs heavily on our industry. Our industry is, we sell $30,000 to $40,000 items daily. They are, they are, the BNO tax is figured from grocery receipts, so it's not on the profit of a vehicle that we make or the profit of a service we provide, it's on the selling price of that. So because we sell expensive items, the impact of a BNO tax is great. As an example, this last 12 months, over the last four quarters, our business has paid $80,000 in BNO tax to the city of Issaquah. Under the new proposal, with the same numbers, we would pay $148,000 next year. The following year, on the second tier of the increase, it would go to $200,000. So it's about a 250% increase in BNO tax over a two-year period. And I know that our community needs the funds to fix these issues. I understand that, and businesses need to pay their fair share. However, I will remind you, it's not businesses that pay tax, it's the people that pay the tax. We have no choice but to pass those expenses on. There just is not margins in the products that we sell that people believe that there might be. So with that in mind, we've been able, as a dealership, to, for example, the Chevy store, before I came across the street to the Ford store, we were the second-largest Chevy store in five states, in Issaquah. No particular reason for that. I can tell you in just a minute, the Evergreen Ford is the third-largest Ford store in five states. Now, Bellevue, for example, does one-fifth the amount of business that Evergreen Ford does, Bellevue Ford, in auto row in Bellevue. The battle is not done to sell cars in the dealership anymore. It has nothing to do with the location of the store. The battle to sell cars and to provide that type of business and revenue to our city comes from my ability to compete on the internet. So my ability to compete on the internet means the margins are compacted less and less and less and less, but it drives volume up and up and up and up, and we pump in from all over the Northwest, all the way, really, from five states. But all we're concerned in this meeting is about the state. But all we're concerned in this meeting is about the state of Washington. So we drag people all over the state to Isaguacano to buy Fords, and now, the new Evergreen Lincoln's selling Lincolns, providing more sales tax and BNO tax, which is fabulous. I mean, we want to be part of the community, we want to be heavily involved in the community. I want to sell more, I want to sell different types of products. I want to have more opportunity to build business for Isaguacano.
You have one minute remaining.
Okay. Well, my point is, is that the tax on grocery receipts is heavily weighted against the automotive industry, and it's very, very heavy, from $80,000 a year to $200,000 a year over the next two years. I would hope that maybe we can look somewheres else for a sliver here and a sliver there, where we can find where we can help. Again, business doesn't pay the taxes, the people do. So with that, we'd like to grow, we'd like to grow more, we'd like to provide more tax revenue for the city and help the issues that we do have. We're here to be your partners. So, thank you.
Matthew Bott?
Good evening, members of the council. Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity to address you. I would like to speak on a similar topic, the BNO taxes, but I would be remiss if I didn't, I guess, first introduce myself, Matthew Bott from the Isaguacano Chamber, work at 155 Northwest Gilman. But I would be remiss in not congratulating the city on the Costco development agreement passed a week ago today, I believe. So a big deal for the community, a lot of hard work by lots of folks in the community, by Costco, of course, and by you and all the work that you put in to provide your oversight and due diligence. So wanted to say congratulations on that. I'm here tonight to just share some feedback on the topic of the BNO tax increase that is put into the proposed 2005 budget. So let me just share a little bit about what we're hearing in the chamber, and hopefully this is helpful for you and your decision-making process. First of all, businesses are now just learning about it. I know it's something that's been in discussion at the city and, of course, at the chamber for really the past eight months or so, but thanks to the good work of the city in sending the letter from the mayor out to BNO taxpayers, the open houses, the articles in the paper and the website, word is now getting out there, and so I think that's important, and I appreciate that. It will still take a few weeks for businesses to learn about what the impact is, as they talk to their accountants and are able to look into that. So a few weeks ago, I was getting maybe one phone call a week about this, now it's about every day. And I know that's the same for your economic development department. This is important because budgets are being set now for 2015, and so providing the certainty in what that rate is going to look like is extremely important. There is a growing recognition among businesses, I think, at least what I'm hearing, about the expense and revenue drivers of the city, and how some of these drivers are changing. And I want to thank the city for sharing with the chamber what that looks like in the scope of that, of those challenges and opportunities that are facing the community at this time. We appreciate the discussions and the outreach that have taken place on this, and prior to taking a position on this, on the proposed increase, we viewed it as our job to get the word out in support of the city and let businesses know what this would look like. There's, of course, an appreciation, as you would expect, for the exemption from going from $20,000 to $100,000, so for a business that paid a few hundred dollars to have their taxes done, to their CPA to pay $17, obviously, that's a good move for them and a good move for the city to increase its efficiency, so we want to recognize that. So with that being said, there is a concern about this being too much and too fast, and a question about the methodology that was used to arrive at this specific proposal. 150% increase on manufacturers, retailers, and wholesalers over two years is quite the sticker shop. It's a pretty big increase, percentage-wise. For some businesses, this increase on gross revenue is something that hopefully can be managed. For others, it's certainly something that's larger and will be, present a pretty significant concern, especially during recessionary periods, to which thankfully, we're not in right now. There's a continued desire to better understand what has caused this projected structural deficit, and what expense reductions have been considered for 2015 to help lighten the tax increase burden on businesses. Questions have come up about what economic analysis has taken place and fed into this decision. For example, what is the analysis said about the impacts this will have on business retention and recruitment? Businesses would appreciate knowing that that analysis has been done and what the findings were going forward to feed into this decision. Being able to point to that analysis to help justify the proposal will be extremely important. Questions have also come up regarding the sequencing of these increases. Having this increase put forward before the Economic Development Strategic Plan seems a little upsided, so having businesses know what the economic development plan is for the community, and then being asked to support that, I think would be a much easier sell. I know that important work is underway, but again, the feedback we're hearing is, it might be the cart before the horse.
One minute?
So I think, thank you. I think that would be it for my comments for tonight. I will try to keep you updated on things that I hear, hopefully that's helpful. I thank you for the continued outreach. I know there's one more open house, and I think, a week from tonight, and we're looking forward to being there. We will be putting a survey to our members and to the community out on this topic to help provide further information, and we'll be very happy to share what those responses are. So again, thank you for the opportunity to have a good thoughtful sort of dialogue about this important topic, and we look forward to working together further in the future.
Last on my list?
So is there anyone else in the audience who has not signed up who desires to speak this evening? Senator Mullet?
Thank you. For the record, my name is Mark Mullet. I live at 3129 Northeast Harrison Street in Isaguacano, and I own the Zeke's Pizza Restaurant and Ben &amp; Jerry's Store here in town. And so, yes, this is my first time in front of the council since, before I got on the council back in '09, and I don't want to be the guy who only shows up to complain, so let me first express my great love for the administration and for all the council members, and my deep appreciation for all your hard work. And I know you're all getting $700 a month, no one's doing it for the money, and so I'm very grateful. And as Matt mentioned before, like, the Costco development agreement, this is a huge win for this community, and it's because of the hard work that the people in this room have done on things like that, that Isaguacano is the place that I'm planning on calling my home for the rest of my life. So in terms of the BNO proposal that's in front of us, and obviously, because I, you know, am an elected official and I own a business in town, people know where to find me when they have issues to complain about, so I feel like I get a lot of feedback on these things. And I think this is the challenge, and I know Councilmember Share probably has all the budget books sitting in his garage, because I don't think he's ever thrown one out, but if we went back to the 2009 through 2012 period when I was on the council, it was the recession. And if we had a million dollars of revenue growth in the city of Isaguacano, that was considered a lot. And so we would sit in our budget meetings and figure out, how do we balance our books with a million dollars of revenue growth, given the expenses hitting the city? And that was basically what we had from 2009 through 2012, and all of us figured out how to make that work. As we came out of the recession, the revenue growth for the city obviously increased, as it should. And so now, we're kind of at a point where we're experiencing like $2 million a year in revenue growth for the city. When I was on the council, the final budget, you know, the 2012 council budget was $31.5 million. Obviously, the budget in front of us this year is 38.5 million. And so this is, we have more revenue. I think the fundamental challenge, which I think everyone has going into these final budget sessions, is we have to make tough decisions, because I think that the impression from the business community is, I think people thought it might have originally been a typo. I think that 250% people thought was probably 25%, and they weren't doing like the fourth decimal place, third decimal place math correctly. And so I think when people realized it really was a 250% increase in the BNO tax, there has been a sense of shock in the business community, and I think, as Mr. Wren said, I think the business community appreciates everything the city does to support the businesses. And I think that if the discussion tonight was a 25% increase in the BNO tax, I think you would probably find the business community complaining about it, but understanding that it is an essential thing that we probably have to go forward with. So I think what the discussion is going into the budget sessions is, what is that incremental amount that is put on the business owners in this city going to be? And I think the math, when I look at it, is, my businesses, I pay $1,500 a year in BNO tax to the city, substantially less than the car dealership. But the sales tax that I bring in is 10 times that, so it's $15,000 a year, the city's portion of that sales tax. And so I know that math is going to hold true for the car dealership. And so I think when the goal is to raise revenue for the city, we always have to keep in mind that balance, because where the real magic happens for the city is on that sales tax side. And the more sales tax we have within the city boundaries, the better off the city coffers are going to be to pay for services. And I think the thing I experience all the time is, half my customers come from Sumamish, they have no services in Sumamish. So you have this town with 40,000 people, about to be 50,000, they obviously are all driving to Isaguacano because it's easier for us to get services, because we're closer to the freeway. They obviously have no BNO tax there. And so far, they have had a very difficult time in getting those commercial businesses to open up within Sumamish to serve their city, and we have benefited from that city coming to Isaguacano to do all their shopping. And I think that my fear with this sort of proposal is, it sends a dangerous message to the Puget Sound region about Isaguacano's commitment to being a facilitator for businesses to be successful in this town. And that's why I think these final budget meetings, it's going to be important to make tough decisions. I think you could obviously pass along some increase, but I do think the increase in the range of 25% is what you'll probably find the business community saying they feel like that was a good compromise. I think if the increase ends up being double what it is now, you'll still have a lot of frowns and frustration from the business community. So I wish you guys the best of luck in your final budget sessions. Thank you very much for your hard work.
Mr. Kapler?
Good evening. David Kapler, 255 Southeast Andrews Street. I didn't know my neighbors across the alley were going to be here tonight, but for decades, literally decades, Andrews Street was the second-worst street in terms of road condition, only surpassed by Rainier Boulevard. So the kids and everybody else chose to speed on the nice new paving they did on Bush Street, I think when they did the fiber optics through there. So Andrews Street doesn't get it, so don't just move a tuss, please. No, it's got to be dealt with, and I was amazed, I was out in the alley today, and how fast cars go through the alley between Bush and Andrews, too. And that's local residents likely not cut through traffic. But it is a serious deal. I know the council dealt with it in the past, and, but enforcement would help. I can remember getting community service kids from the court, the student court at Isaguacano High School, I don't know if they have it, that would get tickets for cutting through there, and I put them to work doing Scotch broom removal and other invasive plant removals. So I'd be glad to take on some of those kids again, because there's plenty to do. My intention tonight was not to speak to this issue, but since it came up. The other Costco trail, I just walked around the vet hospital yesterday. It's a matter of cutting back a few blackberries and throwing some branches aside, and there would be a trail there. It's on higher, above the creek, sandy ground, it really doesn't need much surfacing, it'd be in better surface condition than the trail that will actually join in the state park, which is more rutted and wetter. Mountain Sound Greenway, a big event this summer, and the last event, I got to be the honorary leader from Preston to Isaguacano, and the people on the march were so thrilled coming to Isaguacano. We had a salmon dinner, thank you Jim Berry, and a big event in Isaguacano, the swimming pool, showers, good place to, you know, it was just really something that they looked forward to. So I hope the city will continue being a big supporter of that event this year. That's it, thank you.
Is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Yes, sir.
I'll be quick, because I know there's been a lot of us. I'm John Burrell Levine, I live at 245 Southeast Bush Street. I've been in the neighborhood since 2006, and so I was here a few years ago, we went through a similar exercise regarding the traffic, and I remember we had Isaguacano Police Department and Fire and Rescue in here, and I just want to kind of highlight something that was said earlier that might have gone without notice, which is, you know, I think we can make a decision here based on data, right? We have all of the information about the number of times there's been a dispatch into this particular region. We have all the data and all the studies that have been done around the speed impact from speed humps, speed bumps, things like that. And I guess what I would encourage us to do is, last time we had a very, there was a lot of emotion, right, in the discussion, and I think that we can make a decision this time that everybody gets behind if we look at it from, just from that data perspective, right? What's the cost of doing this? What's the potential impact of not doing it? And what it is, I don't know, right? We talked about closing things off, and then we had a discussion where we'd have to pay HOA fees, and we'd have to pay for our services at that point, because we'd be sort of a private community. Things like cutting back the trees to expose the signs have helped, but then there's other areas where the signage, you know, it's from 2:00 to 5:00 right turn off of Second, which is great for a certain part of the day, but it doesn't solve the lunchtime hours when high school students go there. So there's a lot of little things that I think we could benefit from some sort of, you know, tracking or study, and I think a lot of us would be willing to participate in something, right? We've thrown down those things that count the amount of vehicles and the speed they're going, but it was during the summer, right, I think, at one point, or it was during winter vacation, or something like that. So I just, I think that that's the opportunity, is to look at it from a data perspective, as opposed to a subjective emotion-based perspective. Happy to come back, bounce ideas, figure out what we can do to move forward, but it's really important. My kids, I don't even let my kids play in the street, because we're right there off that right turn, people come screaming around it all the time, so, all right, thanks.
Is there anyone else desiring to speak this evening? Yes.
Mayor Butler, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for hearing me tonight. As you know, recently, we had a little celebration here in Isaguacano, so we've caught our breath, and we wanted to make sure that you realized all that was involved and how much we appreciated. The salmon were shagging, the sun was shining, and everyone was feeling groovy. You helped put the mojo in Coho, so we want to thank you for your support. On behalf of the Isaguacano Chamber of Commerce Festival's office, and I see even volunteers and sponsors in this room, we want to thank you for your support, your cooperation and collaboration for the 2014 Salmon Days Festival, Coho Mojo. There was great weather, new events, we appreciate all your support and openness in trying to accept and work with us to get to the yes. The departments we work with are tremendous in doing that, and I want to make sure that you know the police and public works and parks bend over backwards and help so much in problem-solve and troubleshoot, and so you need to hear that from citizens who work with them, how important that is. And we just want to make sure that you mark your calendars for next year, October 3rd and 4th, we'd like an encore, so save the date, and here's a little treat.
Thank you very, very much, Robin, and thank you for all you do to make Salmon Days success also. Thank you for your leadership. Is there anyone else in the audience desiring to speak this evening? Anyone else? Third and final call, anyone else desiring to speak this evening? With that, audience comments are closed, and we will move now to committee and regional reports. Councilmember Milligan?
No report, thank you.
Councilmember Pauli?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The King Conservation District Advisory Committee met on Wednesday, September 17th, Wednesday, October 15th, and they are finalizing implementation plans around a new program that they're proposing for 2015 with the county. I have something I'll bring to good of the order, which is about support for a potential letter campaign that they're having right now. Another item for King Conservation District, they're having their annual meeting, which is an open meeting in Enhamclaw at the Fairgrounds on October 22nd, RSVPs are required. And the next meeting of the advisory committee is November 5th, from 1:00 to 2:30 in the Bellevue Library. Also, the chamber met on September 24th and did an update on planning for Salmon Days and some legislative coalition papers, and I got to go to that board meeting, and I believe the next board meeting is, I might have, sorry, it's this Thursday at 12 o'clock. And that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz?
No report.
Councilmember Share?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening to members of the viewing public. I have two reports this evening. The first is that the Council Infrastructure Committee will meet tomorrow at 5:30 p.m. sharp in the Pickering Room of City Hall Northwest. On the agenda is Agenda Bill 6856, the Isaguacano Highlands Shared Stormwater Agreement. We also have, upon approval of tonight's consent agenda, Agenda Bill 6911, the acquisition of Bass &amp; Bass Partnership and Reed Family Investments LLC parcels on East Lake Sumamish Parkway. We also have Agenda Bill 6890, the Clean Scapes Contract Amendment. Agenda Bill 6903, upon approval of tonight's consent agenda, Principles for Collaboration and Joint County-City Climate Commitments Resolution. Agenda Bill 6914, upon approval of tonight's consent agenda, Principles for Collaboration Agenda Bill 6914, upon approval of tonight's consent agenda, Fiscal Year 2016 Water Quality Assistance Program Grant Application Submittal. That item may be moved up in its place in the agenda a couple spots. And finally, a discussion concerning alternatives, brainstorming ideas around the Route 200 and transit in our community. Secondly, the Eastside Transportation Partnership met, and we had a presentation from the Puget Sound Regional Council concerning their active transportation plan. We took care of some housekeeping and updated our procedures. But the highlight of the morning was a appearance by King County Executive Dow Constantine. King County is the lead agency for the Eastside Transportation Partnership and all the sub-area boards, and we always have King County represented at the table. But we were joined personally by Executive Constantine, who gave us a report on integration between sound transit and King County Metro, ways to improve efficiency, ways to have the two agencies work more closely together. And we had staff members from both of the agencies who answered questions by the partnership members. And it was a very illuminating and interesting presentation that gave us a lot of good information about those efforts. And that concludes my reports. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. The Lodging Tax Committee met on October 15th. We had 10 applicants that presented to us, or presented their applications. We had used a range of seven different items as far as criteria in our scoring format that we had, everything from hotel night stays to bringing somebody from outside, the number of visitors from 50 miles away. Also, one of them was the alignment with a tourism plan that was new this year. So we did make a recommendation that we funded eight of the seven for a total of $85,888. And this recommendation from the committee will be coming back to the 28th Budget Work Study Session for review from this group. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
No report.
And Council President Winterstein.
Thank you. There will be a meeting of the Joint Recommendation Committee Board this Thursday, October 23rd. There will be two items that will be acted upon. One is the JRC State Legislative Agenda, and the second will be the selection of awards in the total of about $1 million in the 2015-2016 timeframe for projects which address rapid rehousing, emergency shelter, transitional housing, and shelter diversion recommendations. That's this Thursday, this Thursday morning. That concludes, oh, wait, I'm sorry, there is one more thing I wanted to mention. It was already mentioned before. It's not really a report, but we sometimes talk about upcoming meetings. So next Tuesday, everybody, we have our next scheduled budget deliberation meeting. It'll be here in council chambers, starting at 6:30 on Tuesday, the 28th of October. That concludes my report.
Thank you. There will be an executive session meeting held this evening to discuss potential property acquisition. RCW 42.30.110, Pren 1, Pren B, covers the topic that we will be discussing. The item is expected to take 30 minutes, and action is anticipated. Each month, I meet at a different location in the community on a Saturday morning. And on October 11th, I met citizens at Timber Ridge at Talis, where 25 to 30 residents and staff were present to discuss issues and concerns in the city. The Fourth Annual King County Executive Small Business Awards spotlighted 21 businesses exemplifying success in seven categories on Wednesday, October 15th. The city and the Issaquah Chamber are award partners of the event by nominating Issaquah businesses for recognition. Unfortunately, none of the businesses in our city made it to the final list round this year. Any business that is interested in nomination for next year's event should contact the city's Economic Development Department or Chamber for support. On Wednesday, October 8th, I met with the Washington City's Insurance Authority for the city's self-insurance pool audit that concentrated on land use and city codes and practices. The audit resulted in two requirements being generated, which will be monitored for compliance by October 2015. The first of these was to update the public participation plan and to assure that it's adopted by the council, filed with the clerk, and is included as a part of the comprehensive plan review, which is underway. We're doing, there was no problem with what we were doing. This just is the formalization or documentation of putting that policy in writing. The other was that the city should have a written policy or ordinance that very specifically outlines ethical constraints for employees, council members, and any individuals serving on our boards and commissions. In addition, the city should advise and/or train its employees, council members, and board members on those, on that ethics policy or code. And as a matter of interest, from the 2013 audit, that reviewed cyber liability, and the one mandatory requirement coming out of that was to have a procedure or a policy on alerting information technology of departing employees with an emphasis on employees who leave abruptly or are terminated. We now have exiting employee checklist, which is in use and has been distributed to all supervisory staff in order to meet that requirement. Finally, the Plant Into the Future event held at Confluence Park on October 8th was a big success. Members of the local community and stakeholders came together to celebrate the next phase of Confluence Area Park. Senator Mark Mullet, Representative Maganad, Skip Rowley, and Forterra spoke at that event. In addition, two elementary school classrooms planted 105 native trees along the creek, and so it was a wonderful celebration and highlights the tremendous potential available at Confluence Park as we move forward with the next phases. So with that, that concludes my report. Moving now to the consent calendar. Have the accounts payable and payroll been reviewed?
I'm sorry, they have.
And with that, what, how would you like to deal with the consent calendar this evening? Council President Winterstein.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Then moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor of approving the consent calendar as submitted signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously. There is no regular business on our agenda, so now we will move into executive session.
Good of the order.
We can do for Good of the Order now, or we could do that after our executive session and any action. But why don't we do Good of the Order now? So this evening, for Good of the Order, Councilmember Barber says you raised that question. I suspect you have something.
I do have something. So this evening, there's a couple of items with Eastside Fire and Rescue, and just looking for a little input this evening. So there's four items for finance. So double insurance coverage for spouse and dependents in the exempt group. And these are not all my notes, so please excuse me if I stumble here a bit. It was not clear in the committee in the review of this topic if this is a current practice. And Deputy Chief Tryon is with us, so if we need some additional help, he's here to help out with this. So the current practice, families with insurance from both workplaces, whether the benefits would be lost if current coverage does not allow topping up. And if the benefits are not lost, what the savings would be to the exempt group. So the question is, if double coverage does exist without the benefit of top-up coverage, should this be eliminated for the exempt group? And should there be financial incentive to get families with double coverage to pick up one plan? So can you help us, Greg? Explain just a little bit more. So right now, the exempt group is getting their insurance from the Trust 1, I mean, Left 1 Trust.
Correct.
Which is the firefighter unions, and they have had the right to have insurance from this through the agreement with the firefighters' union, correct?
Correct. The provider itself is Primera, and they allow, another term for it is double coverage. So if their spouse were employed someplace else, a coordination of benefits would happen between the Left Health Trust and that other spouse's insurance.
So it is an allowed practice?
It is an allowed practice, yes.
And?
There was concern early on that it wasn't allowed under the Affordable Care Act, and it is allowed, and our insurance doesn't.
And at this moment, as I understand, there's probably only one member of that exempt staff who would be using the possibility of this because the remainder of the wives are not employed spouses.
For the exempt staff, that is correct, yes.
Okay. So did I cap, Mary Lou?
Yeah, you did, Eileen. I just wanted to give a little more background. Before the last board meeting, this information that Greg brought today was not confirmed. And I think the intent, if I, I don't want to speak for the board, but the intent was that the board look for cost savings, and especially in a case where there might be no benefit through something, yet a fee being charged to look at it. So my guess is that tomorrow, Finance Committee, when this information is presented, that the Finance Committee will say that this is a moot point and not a place to be. Well, it is not something that will generate any cost savings for Eastside Fire and Rescue or the city partners. So this first question, more or less, goes away. Sure.
But if it, okay, so if the, if the result, current result right now is that it wouldn't result in any cost savings, is still, is there a policy that still allows it? So is?
Yeah, I think where this ought to end up is that there's also now an operations committee on Eastside Fire and Rescue. And there seems to be a bit of a disconnect with the board in terms of how much we understand how the entire healthcare package works, and that next year, they should do a study. This was one idea that was thrown out by the Operations Committee. It sounds like it's not going to go anywhere, but really, the Operations Committee should be looking at the healthcare benefit in a broader light next year, looking for other opportunities for savings. So this was just one aspect.
Okay. There's a couple more. The next one, excuse me, is the Equipment Replacement Fund. And so tomorrow, we're going to, Finance Committee is going to be reviewing a couple different scenarios and recommending to the board the feasibility of reducing the membership's payment for the fund, for the Equipment Replacement Fund in 2015. Currently, there's about $1.3 million from all parties that go into this fund yearly. Issaquah is about $370,000. So the question is, does the council support a reduction in the membership contribution at this time, and at what risk? If you can help us, Greg, with explaining this, because it's a tough one to understand, the equipment replacement is little dollars amount going in every year, and they're scheduled to pay for larger purchases. So the dollars are collected over a long period of time from all the members without then having to come back, say, if we didn't do it this way, coming back and saying, we need to buy a new engine. And so this year, we'll have to have you all, you know, provide a fair substantial dollar amount, as opposed to continually, year after year, applying the 370K. And then everything is planned out in a very long spreadsheet that is taken care of by Wes Collins, to be able to cover all of these purchases with smaller investments yearly.
So if I may say, we had a committee of the whole meeting about a month ago, where you addressed this issue, and I think the council was pretty clear at that time that if indeed there was an opportunity and a willingness to enact this type of Equipment Replacement Fund rebate, or for lack of a better word.
Reduction?
Well, for this year, reduction for this coming year, that, at least that's my recollection, that we were very much in favor of that. We have, we're looking at a very significant increase in our total bill from Eastside Fire and Rescue, and this one seemed to be reasonable. I don't know if, that's my recollection. I don't know if my colleagues on the board recall the same.
And then to what percent? Are we talking total? Are we talking 50%, 25%?
And actually, maybe, since we have Greg here, we can ask questions. They're presenting tomorrow to the Finance Committee. So have they put together?
Yes.
Scenarios?
We put in four scenarios. The first scenario is freezing at this year's level participation. So normally, it's roughly about a 3% growth, because that's what we see in the industry of purchasing apparatus. That's one option. Then we've also a $100,000 reduction, a $200,000 reduction, and a $300,000 reduction. We're going to have a recommendation for the Finance Committee to look at, and not stealing Wes's thunder, but it's most likely between $100,000 and $200,000 that when we spread it out, the problem really looks like it hits about 20, 27. But that would give us time to make up, or, you know, if that is in fact a gap year. So we could see that a benefit to the partners being a reduction of about $200,000 in the Equipment Replacement Fund. City of Issaquah, the way the finance policies are, you're actually using capital dollars to go into that Equipment Replacement Fund, so it doesn't affect positively the operations, but it is still money that's saved based on that funding formula, which is just about 25%, 26% of that $200,000.
Make a comment, Paul? Our mayor. Actually, we were checking with our financial director at the last meeting, and it comes out of a fund with the word capital in it, but it is not restricted money. That money is, my understanding was, it's moved from the general fund to the capital something fund, and that's where we give our membership fee from. So if there were to be a reduction in what we paid for this year, it would be the council's discretion as to how to deal with that. And I guess the one thing I'd want to point out, what Eileen will be seeing tomorrow and evaluating for our council is several scenarios that show, you know, how, where the dip might be. If the funding level is reduced, where you might get a dip. I would go back to the same thing about, in this particular year, I am encouraging them to go with a scenario that really creates some cost savings. My hope is that next year, the Operations Committee will be able to look at how the Equipment Replacement Reserve Fund is built and give us a different kind of report back so that, right now, I don't have a really good understanding. I couldn't explain to you if this is good or bad, or how it works. But that is something that could be looked into detail next year. So my thoughts on it were to encourage them to look for savings this way this year, significant savings.
And so?
I would agree with that. I was not the committee of the whole meeting, but I would agree with that. I think we have a significant increase coming to us next year, and what we can do to mitigate that and continue to look out into the future, I think, is very wise and prudent.
New protective equipment, this must be the ballistic vests, that are estimated to be $50,000 to $75,000 to purchase, and the boards are recommending the funds to be found within the existing line items. And then there is, so no new spending in regards to that, but these are required to now have on the rigs for the safety of our police, excuse me, of our firefighters if they enter into a hot zone. So they are required now to have this protective gear. The board also voted to allocate an overage in the fund, in the ending fund balance, an estimated $315,000, back to the members into the 2015 to be used for membership contributions. So that's, Mary Lou?
I can just put a few little more details back around that. That generally is what happened, is the ending fund balance, the board did recommend at the last meeting that it be refunded, meaning that if there is an ending fund balance of $315,000 at the end of 2014, it could go towards the membership commitments of the partners. The purchase of the vests was to come out of that surplus ending fund balance of $315,000. So just in my way of looking at accounting, that's So just in my way of looking at accounting, that's a new purchase out of some leftover money and I just felt in this year that that is not what the council direction was, that we, if there's an opportunity to reduce our membership fees from, I think we have a $608,000 increase this year, we should be looking for those opportunities. So the direction was that, it sounds like a necessary purchase, figure out how to do that within the budget without doing it out of the surplus ending fund balance.
So, oh I'm sorry.
Out of the, to the 2015 budget?
Correct. That it, the justification for the purchase seemed to be there, but not to spend it out of the ending fund balance. So basically directing the fire chief to tell us how we would buy that out of the budget that was submitted and not purchase those out of the surplus ending fund balance for this year. So that that surplus balance would go to reducing our membership fee, membership payments.
Do you know, how, how are those protective vests classified? So you use the word operations and?
How do you mean how are they classified? Greg?
Well, so before we go there, so, so, you know, I, and we've, we've talked about it in this council before about ending fund balances being used for items that have some return to, you know, the, you know, some, some long-term asset, something, maybe a contingency fund for special purposes, or maybe something that would give others, some other type of real clear benefit and return to the community, but not to support ongoing expenses.
So you're, you're a little bit ahead. So the ending fund balance is typically planned to be 1/12 of the operating budget. The $315,000 is those funds in excess of the 1/12. So the plan was not to reduce the ending fund balance by the cost, it was to go to the ending fund balance surplus and spend that down. So it wasn't coming out of the ending fund balance, it was coming out of the ending fund balance surplus. And the board has several options on how to direct Eastside Fire and Rescue to manage the surplus. One of them, which was the one that was voted on, is to refund it to the memberships and allow them to use it to reduce their contribution in the following year. So it's, maybe one of the, maybe the fire chief will come back and say he wants to spend the one-time purchase out of the ending fund balance, but that's not what was presented to us.
Yes, okay, so my question was, yeah, about the classification of that expense. I mean, is it, you mentioned as an operational expense, it doesn't?
It's a safety equip, equipment expense, but it's not a one-time because, well, you do have to plan for their replacements. So they go into the, I would assume, equipment replacement budget format at that time afterwards and that's how you replace them, but you buy them, you have them for a certain amount of time, they get tested, either you keep them or they fail and you get new vests. You could say one time.
Yeah, my general guidance would be for one-time necessary assets. I mean, that's.
That's an option of.
That's an option. That seems viable to me, but that's just my own opinion.
It is required equipment.
Thank you. I think we're kind of coming back around to the whole topic and I wanted at this time to go back to the double coverage insurance and to Councilmember Goodman's comment about policy. We have one exempt staff member now who could take advantage of this, but at any time during a budget year, there could be other members of, of the staff and there could be additional savings if there was a policy that did not, that did not wish to use the double coverage. And also, as we're wrangling over $50,000 for a protective vest and we think it's insignificant, the cost of coverage for healthcare, boy, I don't know how, what it would take to rack up a pretty quick protective vest covering somebody who's already covered by another insurance policy. So I don't want to take anything away from anybody, I just don't want to pay for it twice. So I just wanted to bring that back up in this context, that gee, let's, why are we struggling here when maybe it's already there?
And one further item would be discussion in regards to expanding training for volunteer firefighters. There, there was a proposal to expand the, the existing training with no offsetting of costs. And this is currently, there is currently a no training strategy or plan in place to assist the value of the, the new training thoughts, your thoughts. So basically the idea is, I don't think this is going to be moving forward to expand this training at this point in time, but it will be coming up. Because the firefighters at this time do receive all the necessary, these are volunteers, so they do receive all the necessary training they need in order to be a volunteer. This would expand some of their training that they have not had in the past and are looking to provide for them. So it would provide them, it'd bring them up to the very basic beginner one firefighter level of training is where this additional coverage would get them, would be a basic level one training. So at this point, I don't know where the, it is in the next year's budget, but, so we can have a discussion on that and take a look at it, but I've not heard of much support for it. Mary Lou?
So just one comment on that is, it likely is the only new expense, I mean, there are some labor increases and things that are built in, they're in negotiations now, but this may be the only other expense that stood out as an expansion of an existing program. It doesn't seem to be the year to expand the program, but it's not just about money, it's more about having a strategy. And again, this is something that should go back through one of the Eastside Fire and Rescue Committees next year is, there needs to be a better understanding of what is the, the training strategy, what are the training programs, what are mandatory programs required by legislation, best practice training and other training that we'd like to have, because I don't think the, the board really understands that now. So to just expand a training program without understanding our strategy is, is kind of tough in this year. And there didn't seem to be much support at the board level for a program expansion, especially while the training would bring them up to a basic firefighter level one, they do not replace a firefighter. So they're on the crew with or without the training, but they don't replace a firefighter. So they get training, but there's no corresponding change in what a crew looks like or who responds or anything like that. So that, there was a lot of questions around that, to give the training, but then there's nothing really different going on the ground.
So what's the guidance you're seeking on that one?
That there, this, in this budget in this year, no new programs, no new program expansions without some study. And that's where I think next year, the committee should be busy, because there were several big questions that were asked this year. Training strategy is one of them. Going back a little bit to, there was a drafted proposal, very first preliminary draft proposal of a training facility. Again, that all has to tie in together, a better understanding of what our training strategy is and how do all these pieces fit together, what should it cost, and then talk about what the program funds look like.
Anybody have any input?
Okay, thank you.
So to, perhaps, Stacy?
Turn the microphone on. No, that sounds reasonable to, no new expenses this year, no new programs, without a strategy for it. I'm, I'm still a little unclear on what the, because I wasn't at that committee of the whole meeting, sort of what the feedback is regarding the vests. Because I wasn't, couldn't get that conversation. So, we didn't talk about it?
Yeah.
Okay.
I can tell you what the board said, but our group didn't really, actually, we were trying to maybe stay above the line item detail. Now that the Eastside Fire and Rescue, it's, the budget is moving through its final phases, you end up getting into the detail and deciding what's our policy around that and then it affects this detail. So the policy, the, the board's deliberations about it was the policy question, when we're talking about safety and required equipment, that this is necessary, that it needs to be in the budget, so go and tell us how it fits into the budget that you have. That was the board direction.
Okay.
So there is a finer point there. If, if I read this correctly, is, does it come out of the proposed budget, the existing budget, but not out of the surplus ending fund balance? That really seems to be the question. And the preference, I believe I heard from the discussion, trying to summarize, is that we want to maximize savings and ideally it would come out of the proposed budget, not the ending fund surplus, which would go back to reduce member fees. Did I get that right?
The $315,000, yes.
And not out of the required ending fund balance, which is a financial policy to maintain 1/12 of the, the operational budget for contingencies. So I guess Eileen, and, you know, speaking for the council, do you have the guidance you need for tomorrow?
I'm comfortable, thank you.
Okay. And moving forward for good of the order?
Quick one. King Conservation District is asking the cities through Sound City Associations and directly to write letters of endorsement for their new program of work they're proposing for 2015, which is some existing programs, expansion of a few programs and some new, new programs. So my question back to our council is, I know the city of Seattle is currently drafting or has issued a letter in support of the programs that they delivered, I believe it was last week, with a caveat on it, that in the first year of implementation, as they are expanding programs and hiring staff and starting, any unused funds in the new rate structure be placed in 2015, back into the jurisdictional grant program, which is something that all of the jurisdictions can take advantage of. So the proposed plan of work and budget is more or less structured so that it's, assuming those programs are starting up really quickly. And I guess the one little concern that's lingering out there is, if, if we don't spend all that rate increase in the first year, the cities would, some cities would like to see it come back, the jurisdictional grant program. So my questions are, would the council like to participate in the endorsement letter campaign? In which case I can get a, a draft and talk with council president and mayor as to who signs that kind of stuff. And two, are you interested, if you do the endorsement letter, in having the caveat about the jurisdictional grant program?
What's the timing?
The next meeting that the county is discussing is Committee of the Whole, and I'm not sure when that is. I think it is a November Committee of the Whole and they, county will be approving or declining the rate increase on December 15th at their meeting. The rate increase is currently structured as a $5 per parcel rate and the proposal is to go to $10 per parcel. It's a doubling of the rate. It still doesn't generate this amazingly huge pot of money, but it does allow for significant program expansion and the introduction of a new food program into it. So I can provide you, I have inches of stuff on what is involved in the new programs. And then my question tonight is just about the letter and the caveat on the letter, if you want to do it.
Yeah, speaking for myself, I'm, I'm not sure I'm ready, I don't, I know enough yet. And it sounds like we have a little bit of time to consider this and if, but thank you for introduction, introducing the, the.
What would be helpful? I, I'd hate to pass you guys on some of the 150-page stuff that I have. Should I take an attempt at doing like a page summary to send out to you guys to explain the rate structure and quick, quick language about the programs, or how can I get you the information?
Would, would it be possible to have them come in and give a presentation to us?
Oh, absolutely, sure. I'll work on that. And also, I should have mentioned that TOLA is also seeing this at Sound Cities and I don't believe they have, they endorsed the plan of work, but are they done with this for the year now?
I was actually not at the PIC meeting this month, but I know someone who was.
Okay. So this was.
And so.
This was not at PIC this past meeting. It was over the summer and I can't recall if you were there, I was there, we both were there, but there, I can, I can say that the, the PIC members were, that's the Public Issues Committee, was, they were extremely supportive of King Conservation District and all of the great work they do. And I would, I would guess that, I'm not sure about a letter, but I would guess that they would be supportive and that we would be supportive of the caveat that you talked about with that summary.
So if they haven't taken up the issues since the summer, if they didn't talk about it last month, I, I believe what it was, was they were initially sort of, they had a show me attitude because increases, we want to be cautious with increases. And I believe that the sense of the body was that KCD gave sufficient information for people to be comfortable with the rate increase.
I have what I need.
What do you have?
I'm going to go to the King Conservation District and find what a council presentation might look like, how long it would be, and come back through the president and the mayor and figure out which venue that would be best for them to come to.
That's what I thought you were going to say, but I just wanted to make sure. Is there anything else for good of the order this evening before we move to executive session? Seeing none, then we will move into executive session to discuss potential property acquisitions under the provisions of RCW 42.30.110-N1-NB. The item is expected to take 30 minutes and action is anticipated in an open council meeting. So we are in executive session at 8:25. So we are in executive session at 8:25.